I'd like to call the August 16th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Our first order of business is invocation by our county manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be our shield and our guide in everything that we do. Father, we pray for our military, first responders, and frontline workers who continue to serve our country and our community with tremendous courage. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Our pledge by Ms. Sherri Slater, Assistant County Manager.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to acknowledge a few elected officials that's here tonight. Sheriff Hans Miller, thank you, sir, for being here. City Councilman Bob Warden, thank you, sir, for being here. This Susan Mayer from North Topsail Beach, Alderman, thank you for being here. And Omega Jarman, our Rest Your Deeds, thank you, Omega. And I believe Colonel Thomas is here as our chief deputy. Thank you, sir, for also attending. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the agenda. Of course, that's at the end of the meeting. With no other items to be considered, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
To move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any item under two on the consent agenda that any Commissioner would like to have removed and discussed later on the end of the meeting? Here none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
To move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We are now at item three, which is public comment. Ms. Russell, do we have people that signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have three individuals who have signed up this evening for our public comment period. Our public comment period is our opportunity for the public to address the Board as a whole and not as an individual. We do ask that you limit your comments to exactly five minutes, and then you take your seat. I will call each person in the order in which they have signed up. We ask that you confirm your name and address as you approach the podium and speak into the microphone. Please keep your language civil and professional. And the Commissioners will not be responding to our public comment. They will hold their response, if any, until Commissioners' comments at the end of our meeting. Our first public comment speaker is Councilmember Bob Warden, 1006 Clyde Drive in Jacksonville.
Good evening, Commissioners. You know me as a Jacksonville City Councilman, but I'm actually here tonight to speak on behalf of your Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development Team. I am also the chairman of the Building Committee for JOED. We're going to, we're asked, we've been asked by our Board of Directors to come up with a size of a speculative building, the location, the future location of that building, the design, our target audience perhaps, the cost of it, and of course, our plans for funding. I can tell you that our plans for funding is to find somebody that has some money. Grin. We're looking for partners, obviously. We have no money. We are looking for, to partner with perhaps a Southeast Regional Economic Development Partnership. We're also looking at possible state, state funding. There are also grants that are available from private and semi-private foundations. Now, they all, all of those groups have one thing in common. They all require some sort of local match. I'll come back to that local match in a minute. You may ask, why do we need a speculative building? Some people might call it a shell building, but we're going to call it a speculative building. Why do we need one? Well, I'm going to give you an example of some information that we received last Thursday at our Executive Board meeting. There are currently, as of last Thursday, there were currently 48 economic development requests for proposals that fit our area. Of that 48, of those 48, your local economic development team can only respond to two. Now, some of it, we have no control over. For example, 10 of them are looking for direct access to ports, aircraft hangars, or railroad. And of course, you know, we're hopeful for some railroad down the road. But anyway, of those, of those 48, 29 of them required a speculative building. We don't have one. So, no, no product. We don't have any, anything that we can sell, and therefore we cannot respond to those RFPs. So, we're basically out of the game without some sort of a, of a building. So, back in, back in 2018, we gave the county $250,000 that we gave in good faith to show that we believe very firmly in a speculative building to help in our marketing efforts. We know that, that speculative buildings are the number one attraction for, for economic development. So, we, we're, we, we believe that we need a building. Remember, I said something about a local match a little while ago. What we'd like to see, and we respectfully request, that you Commissioners return $250,000 to us so that we can use as a seed project in our share of a local match so that we can attract some, some funding from some other source to build a speculative building. We want to make sure that we continue the prosperity that Onslow County has continued to see. So, with that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Our next speaker is Mr. Matt Ray of 212 Bishop Gate.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Matt Ray. I am a lifetime Onslow County resident and business owner. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development as a vice chair and a member of the Executive Committee. We are requesting this evening that you vote to allow the return of the $250,000 that was given to the shell building with an agreement that it would be returned to continue the economic development of the county. My family and I have been in economic development here in Onslow County our entire lives, and it's what I do every day, and it takes money. Money is the, the number one factor, as we all know. Without it, we, we cannot do much. Unfortunately, it is, it is the way it is. But as of right now, with 90% of the applications that come into our Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development Partnership, we cannot respond to because we do not have a product. A salesman with no product is no salesman at all. So, without that product, without us being able to respond to those actual applications, we have nothing to sell. We, we need to have these buildings here in Onslow County. We need to have a product to say, as other companies have come here through the seventies with MSA, those leaders back then put those buildings here, and they have become huge economic benefactors to the community. And we are asking in the county to continue the, the spirit of, of continued determination with economic development here in, in Onslow County. And I thank you for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Our final speaker in this evening's public comment period is Ms. Melissa Anderson at 149 Hawkins Landing.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here as a, I was thinking about Matt, his lifetime citizen here in Onslow County. I've been here for 32 years, but tonight I have come to speak to you as the treasurer of JOED, a member of Bob Warden's Building Committee, a contributor in Jones-onslow Economic Development, recent Capital Fund Committee, and as a general contractor. We all know that Jones-onslow donated $250,000 for speculative building sites, but what I want to tell you is where that $250,000 came from. That came from many of the Onslow County investors in the Onward Onslow Campaign several years ago. I know that part of the major part of that campaign was to develop a speculative building. I know that they would want those funds to continue in that avenue, and I think in not doing so, we are doing a dishonor to those citizens of Onslow County that really want to see those funds in that same direction. Without a, a building to market of our own, we're going to see a lot of investors going to other counties that do have speculative buildings, and that's going to be a loss of our huge tax base for Onslow County. So, tonight, on behalf of Jones-onslow, we're not asking for a contribution. We're asking for a return, return of those funds so that we can, can continue in the spirit of developing speculative buildings so that we can have investors come and we can apply for those RFPs and those requests for proposals and hopefully get some more investment here in Onslow County. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our public comment period for this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. We'll move on now to item four, which is the presentations, and I think you're going to present that item.
Yes, sir. We have a, one proclamation this evening, and it is to signify Child Support Awareness Month, and I will read that into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow Proclamation, Child Support Awareness Month 2021. Whereas Onslow County recognizes August as Child Support Awareness Month and reaffirms its commitment to strengthening Onslow County families by providing child support services to improve the economic stability and well-being of children. And whereas in state fiscal year 2021, more than $22 million in child support was collected from parents of Onslow County's children. And whereas there are nearly 7,400 child support orders in place, working to ensure that more than 9,700 children receive financial support from their parents. And whereas Child Support Awareness Month salutes the diligent, working parents who spend time with their children and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. And whereas strengthening individuals and families promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to be able to enhance their children's futures. And whereas children who do not receive adequate financial and emotional support from their parents may experience greater difficulty in becoming healthy, happy, and productive citizens. And whereas many concerned and dedicated judges, district attorneys, clerks of court, sheriff's personnel, and child support professionals work to establish and to enforce child support orders for Onslow County children, one of our county's most vital resources. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim August 2021 as Child Support Awareness Month in Onslow County and commend its observance to all citizens, presented on this, the 16th day of August 2021, by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. And I believe Chairman Bright that you have requested that Commissioner Knapp present this to representatives of our Onslow County Department of Social Services.
Did somebody do this on purpose? Because I was coming up here, because it's perfect. I just wanted to know. First of all, I want to applaud you for, for all the effort and the hard work that you guys put in. I know with Sherri, she oversees that section and, and that you guys do a bang-up job. You know, my, my opinion is if, you know, you have a child and you're responsible enough to have a child, you should be responsible enough to fund that child, no matter what happens during a breakup. And so, I think this is very important that these kids, you know, be recognized and be taken care of, and that we do everything we can to make sure that people that have child support orders pay their fines, pay what they need to for their kids. It should go without saying. We shouldn't have to beg these people unless they're financially incapable, that they should be willing to do whatever it takes to pay for their kids. And I truly appreciate what you do, and I appreciate everything you do every day. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing Child Support Awareness Month. Onslow County has contracted with Young Williams to administer child support enforcement services to our citizens since 2014. They continue to meet and exceed the performance goals that are set out by the state. And as Sharon, Ms. Russell, said, in fiscal year 2021, they successfully collected over $22 million. So, with me tonight, I have Tammy Pearson, who is Operations Manager with Young Williams, and Veronica Pinyan, who is the Project Manager.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to serve here in Onslow County, and we hope to continue serving for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you all for your support. As you guys have already been notified, that being able to collect over $22 million for our children during a pandemic year, we're hoping to exceed that again this year for our children. Thank you.
For the return of $250,000 that was used to construct the shell building back in 2016. So, I will let Ms. Russell go over this agenda item, and then we'll call for a motion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We are this evening considering the Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development Request for the Return of a $250,000 Donation that was made as part of our Shell Building Project. Tonight's agenda item is in direct response to a letter that Chairman Bright received from JOED on July 15th, 2021, requesting that the Board of Commissioners return that $250,000 that, that was donated to help pay for the Shell Building at Burton Park. Our records show, Commissioners, that JOED did donate this money. They promised to donate it in front of the Board at a meeting back in 2016. It was supposed to be in two different payments, but it ended up being in one payment in 2018. The county then constructed the Shell Building, and it sold it in February of 2021. The sales price for the Shell Building was $1.45 million. However, we did have significant costs invested in the Shell Building, and $1.23 million, a little more than that, of the sales price is actually payable to the county over a seven-year term. After the payment of our closing costs, the immediate closing costs to the realtor, the county only received $199,529 immediately to go back into the Economic Development Fund that had been established. The rest of it will be received over the next seven years. So, that entire amount of money has not been placed back into our account. I would also point out that we do have some records, if, if the Commissioners are interested, on some of the other costs that went into this, and we have some other information that would be available. But at this time, I respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider this request for the return of the $250,000. And I am available, and so is Brett, our county attorney, for any questions that you may have.
Motion to deny.
Have a motion and a second. I'll open the board up for discussion. And I would ask the manager, how much, how much do we have invested in this Shell Building, other than the, I think the building itself was $1.4 million, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir. I can, I can provide that for you. Our finance office was asked to provide this. The county contributed, of course, the land initially. The land was valued at $399,200. The construction costs were a little over $1.38 million. We have paid for two appraisals on the property. One was $2,400, the other was $2,700. The engineering costs for the construction of the building were $5,601. We had to replace and repair a window that cost $250. Lawn maintenance of the area during the life of the Shell Building cost us $3,145. Utilities over the life of the time that we had the Shell Building cost us $45,855. Our realtor and other closing costs at the time that we sold it finally in February were $57,881. So, the grand total that we have is $1.89 million that we've invested to make the Shell Building come to life in order to promote JOED projects.
How long did the Shell Building stay empty before it actually moved? Do you know, do you have those numbers?
I believe that we started construction back in 2016 when the first permits were done. It was completed in 2018 and dedicated, and then we held it and paid expenses on it until February of 2021, when we hired a realtor and were able to go ahead and sell the building.
Did, who was selling the building? Was, was JOED in the process of selling the building for us?
I think that JOED had prepared some, some information to try to help sell it, but at the Commissioner's request, we did hire independently a real estate firm. We went out for RFQs, and Brett and I were able to work with that realtor and secure an offer.
I know Commissioner Bennett recommended, because the building wasn't moving, that we hire independent realtor to market the building and, and help, you know, get it sold. And I think that come to be with a realtor that we went out on bids on and got low bid to sell it. And then I think you and Brett and Ben maybe worked on the sale and the arrangement. But we really never have got the, we never have gotten the money back for the building. We only have got one payment of $199,000, and...
I think that Brett, Brett, do you want to add anything about that particular part of the arrangement?
Well, the remaining amounts will be paid over a seven-year term. It's amortized over a little bit longer of a term. And out of all the payments will come out the realtor fees. Instead of paying the realtor all its fee at the sale of the building, we only paid the realtor its percentage of the sales proceeds, so it wouldn't all get eaten up at the front end. So, there's going to, out of the money we receive going forward, we'll have to pay more for realtor fees. A portion of every payment goes to the realtor fees.
Can we clear up the arrangement on the, the actual contribution from JOED with the $250,000? Do we have some documentation on what arrangement that was so we can clear up the error with the listening public?
We do, and we've got the resolution that was passed. We also have our agenda item back from that date. The resolution actually states that there's a donation of at least $250,000 of private funding towards the purpose of building the Shell Building from JOED, and that the Board of Commissioners were earmarking these development funds for creation of a future industrial building. The actual agenda item laid out that there would be a revolving account developed here at the county that would be utilized for the purpose of future development in Burton Park. And that is all we have been able to find. JOED referenced in their letter that there was an agreement. As far as a written agreement, we were not able to locate any such agreement.
Do we have a video documentation of that meeting?
We do, sir. If you would, I think I could get the control room to do that, if you want them to do it now, or wait until other Commissioners have had an opportunity to speak, or whatever.
Some of the, some of the board members, I think Paul and I were the only board members during that meeting, so in respect for the board members that wasn't here, I think we need to-
Go ahead and play that.
-show that video, and then the Board can respond to that.
Okay.
If that's okay with the Board.
Okay. I will have, if, hopefully the control rooms listening to me, if they could pull up the, not that one, the, it's the August 1st, that's it, 2016. Yes.
Item B is creation of an economic development fund. Item B is creation of an economic development fund and future industrial building project. Onslow County Government has sought to develop NA Burton Business and Industrial Park in an effort to create new jobs and commercial investment in Onslow County. As part of its economic development efforts, Onslow County received $2,460,000 from the North Carolina Eastern Region. As I pause here, I would like to say that Vice Chairman Buchanan served as the Board of Commissioners, representative to the North Carolina Eastern Region, and then the North Carolina Eastern Alliance, and represented the county's interest in bringing that $2,460,000 back to Onslow County. This money is specifically earmarked for economic development efforts. In addition, the county received over $1.2 million in North Carolina Rural Economic Development funding to open access to large industrial areas of Burton Park. Recently, Jacksonville-onslow Economic Development Incorporated has offered to donate $250,000 in private contributions toward a future industrial building. In an effort to create better processes around economic development funding, the Board has asked to create an economic development fund within, inside of, if you will, the county's general fund. Further, to designate that proceeds from future sales of property within Burton Park for business and industrial use would accrue to this new revolving economic development fund, which once again is inside the county's general fund. In addition, JOED, Jacksonville-onslow Economic Development, has proposed a public-private partnership to build a future industrial building along the roadway that's going to be constructed inside Burton Park using North Carolina Rural Economic Development Funding. The building would be between 25,000 and 30,000 square feet and with 28 to 30-foot ceilings. And the actual preferred building would be a 30,000-square-foot building with 30-foot ceilings. However, until bids come in, we're not quite sure where bids would come in, so you don't know quite how much money that would cost. And, and there is an, an upper limit to the amount of money that JOED and the county could fund. The proposal is that the Board of Commissioners use at least that $250,000 in pledged private donations from JOED and cash-pay the remainder of construction using existing earmarked economic development funding originally received from North Carolina's Eastern Region. There'd be no borrowing for this construction project. And specifically, the money to be used for this cannot be used for any other type of expenditure- expenditure. It has to be 100% economic development use. It came from the license plate tax back when there was the Global Transpark and everything that citizens in the Global Transpark area contributed to that. Right now, we do have Mr. David McColl in the audience, who is available, our Onslow County Finance Officer, could answer questions about any project budget ordinance. And we also have Jackson Onslow Economic Development Chairman, Mr. Ed Garrus, who is available to present the JOED request for the need for a future industrial building. It should be noted that the construction numbers within the project budget ordinance are estimates only pending bid openings. The total project cost is currently estimated at $1434,924. The specific action request of the board, following any questions the board might have, would be to adopt a resolution, which has been provided to the board, that establishes a revolving Onslow County Economic Development Fund within the county's general fund, as well as a project budget ordinance to create a new future industrial building in NA Burton Business and Industrial Park. Madam Chair, with that, I would ask if the board has any questions, or specifically, if the board would like to hear from Mr. Ed Garrus about the JOED contribution of $250,000.
Okay.
I'd make the motion.
Madam Chair, I do not... Hold your motion. You'd like to have a presentation by Mr. Garrus?
Not so much a presentation, but the quick question that I have, and just...
Let him take the podium, if...
Mr. Ed Garrus. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good for having me.
Good. And this is a very quick question. I just was wondering, is this the first time that the request for Economic Development Fund, as far as that'd be part of the general fund, is this the first time this type of request has come to the board?
Yes, ma'am, that I'm aware of. That's correct.
That was all. It was just a very quick one, and I...
Mr. Garrus is accurate. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
I wouldn't say that the funds from the North Carolina Eastern Region, they are already in Onslow County's budget, and they are already earmarked. What's kind of new and unique about this is that you would take those earmarked funds, plus the donation of $250,000, or more, if JOED would care to contribute more. Just saying.
We're committed.
To set that aside inside the general fund as a revolving fund. So, what's really unique is that the board is saying, this money has to be used for economic development, and we could use that to put a future industrial building on, and upon sale of that building, or other lots, inside Burton Park. It would roll that economic development money over and over again into the future, kind of like you've done with the disaster contingency fund. You have $5 million in the county's general fund budget in case there's a disaster, and you just let that sit there and don't touch it for other things.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Motion to adopt a resolution.
A second? Second. I'm going to play devil's advocate here just for a second. Mr. Hudson, anytime that you mix pots of money, you run into the problem that one pot spills over into the other. Do we have safeguards? I know we've done this before, but just to alleviate any concerns that the public might have, that once we get this money into the budget, tax dollars are going to be mixed in with it.
Well, right now, the money is already in the budget, except for the $250,000, which would be a contribution. I would imagine that the $250,000 would be presented to the county, as has been discussed in negotiations, in two separate points in time. One point, which permits are issued for a new building, and secondly, when the punch list items for that building have been completed. So, in two equal installments, the funding would come from JOED to Onslow County earmarked for this one particular project. It would be the job of the Onslow County Finance Department to make sure that that money is spent for only that purpose, and it is already the job of the Finance Department to make sure that the North Carolina Eastern Region funding is only used for economic development purposes. Beyond that, Mr. David McColl, our chief financial officer, is in the audience, and I'd ask him to come to the podium.
So, the funding, as it came back from the investment, that would automatically go into this separate fund also?
Yes, ma'am. Under the terms of the resolution, which is the will of the county, Mr. McColl and his office would have to take the proceeds from the future sale of that building, or from current sales of lots, and place it inside the general fund in an economic development fund. Mr. McColl, would you like to elaborate on how you would be doing that?
Oh, I think you summarized it. It would be on our financial statements at the end of the year. We would track it separately within our general fund, and then it would come... It would appear on our financial statements as a reserve for economic development each year, whenever that balance was. So, you put the investment into the building, you turn around and sell it, the proceeds we were receiving the building would be bookmarked, would be earmarked for future economic development, and it'd be tracked separately from the other funds. But it would collapse into our ultimate general fund financial statements at the end of the year, but it'd be a reserved section of our fund balance.
So, this is something that we've done often before with having funds within the general fund, so it's not some strange or created monster that's never been tried before?
No, it's not. It's not. Like Mr. Hudson was referring to before, the disaster contingency is earmarked separate within our general fund, so it's kind of the same type of mechanisms that are in place.
And the funds that we will be spending are funds that have specific requirements before they can be spent, and we meet these requirements every day with what we can do with tourism money, as opposed to what we can do with an assortment of different funding. That's not something strange or unusual for us either, is it?
It's not. It's not. It's a good point, bringing up the tourism funding, that is something that we, again, within our fund balance, is in a reserved section of our fund balance. So, it only can be spent for tourism needs and development, things along those lines.
Okay.
I got one. The money that economic development is putting in the $250,000 towards this project, that money becomes part of that fund also?
In a sense, yes, it does. It does. It's an investment into the building, so it would be tracked within that same fund, correct?
Okay. My next question is if we sell the building, and hopefully, we can do that, and we sell the building for more than what we got in it, that money also rolls into the economic fund, or does that extra money go to the general fund?
No, it would be... Roll over into economic development fund.
Okay.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passage unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, for letting us look at that and clear up the process, and to make sure everybody knows it was really a donation and not a loan, or not something we were supposed to pay back. It's supposed to go in that fund and stay there until we decide to build another building, if we do, but we don't have enough money to invest in another building now, I don't think. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the history lesson. I wasn't here in 2016, so I didn't know what all went on, but I know that the investors that I talked to, who gave that money, believed that it was going into a revolving fund that was going to build shell buildings. And since 2016, there have been several changes. This is a different board. I don't believe that this board has any intention of building another shell building. I personally don't believe that the county needs to be in the shell building, building business. It needs to be private investment in buildings. We don't need to be in the development business. We've built and sold two shell buildings, and the numbers that you produced for us that say that we lost $400,000 are just another reason why we don't need to be in the shell building business. So, the point here is, if we're not going to be in the shell building business, then we need to get this money to somebody who can be in the shell building business. This money can be used as seed for privately funded shell building. It could be used for matching grants that this board has been reluctant to fund. The money can be used, but it's not going to be used sitting in our fund that's not going to build a shell building. So, that's the whole point of this thing, is we need to get this... Look, now's the time to invest money, and we have the money to invest, give it back to the investors who paid it in, who gave it, for the purpose of building shell buildings, and let's let somebody who has the ability, who has the... Who can go after those private funds, let them build another shell building, and we don't have to be involved in it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a few comments as well. Whenever... First of all, I'd like to say, if I felt like we owed the money, then I feel like we should pay the money to JOED. But as I looked at the documents, I saw several words there that came out, words like invest, fund, donate, contribute. I never heard loan, or return, or any of that, that type of language, that would make me believe that the money would be owed back to JOED. And whenever I look at the names of the people who are members of JOED, they're successful businessmen, they're intelligent people, and they would know that if they wanted that money back, they should include that language in any document, I would think. That would just be something that is just a slow pitch, you know? You know you have to have that language in there if you expect return. I don't think Mr. Selms would ever tell one of his clients to sign any document or any agreement to contribute money that they expected back, if it didn't say that in the document, would you, sir?
Correct. And there's nothing in the resolution that requires the county to pay back.
Okay. And that's my point, and surely, the investors of JOED understand that politically, that the nature of the board may change. The members of the board may change, and the feelings toward the construction of shell buildings may change, and so it was understood that they were risking their money, or invest... Not really risking their money, but investing their money in this joint venture that everybody agreed to, and everybody understood what was going on up front. So, I don't see an obligation of the county to return the $250,000. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? We have people all the time that come up here, and the motorcycle organization that donates money to the Public Safety Memorial. We have people coming and donating money to the food bank for different things, and they donate it. And I would hate to see those people come back a year later, or three years later, and come back and say, "Well, we loaned you that money, because if we take it as a donation, we're going to have to accept it as that." And the money is to go in another separate fund, and I know that we're not saying we're closing the door on building buildings, because we don't have the money now to build a building if we wanted to build one out here. So, we're not closing the door on economic development, as far as, you know, contributing or helping, but maybe you could present a plan to us on what you want to do with a shell building, and if we got the money, maybe we can look at it. But it has to be on a case-by-case basis right now. I mean, that's the policy right now, basically, if I'm not mistaken. But anyway... Mr. Chairman, I think the comment was made that this board was reluctant to do any matching grants. I mean, I may be wrong, but I think that would not be the case over the last... Since I've come on here, I think we had one presented to us, and this board approved that down in the Swansboro-Hubert area, if I'm not mistaken. And then I think the state match took care of that whole thing.
Holly Ridge.
Holly Ridge, as well. So, I don't think this board or myself's reluctant to go into any of the matching grants, and I think that's the route that we would love to see, is matching, like you just said, is proposals or something that comes up, that comes to us. The one thing that bothers me more than anything else is the building of a contentious relationship between JOED and the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. I've said it before, and I'll share it again, is that we've got to do something as a board and as JOED to come together and realize that we're all in the same boat. We're all rowing in the same direction, and there's a lot more success. Right now, I'm not sure that we're all rowing in the same direction. I would love to see, and this is another topic, and I apologize, but I'd love to see the opportunity for JOED and the members of the board, not four of us as a quorum, but to be able to sit at the table and have some conversations, and work through some things, and have more of this stuff shared and more communication. Because I think, at the end of the day, we all want great economic development in Onslow County, and here is a great opportunity for us to leave this meeting tonight, regardless of which way this vote goes, but we need to get something on the calendar to where we get to meet and discuss future economic development, some grant opportunities, requests come in, even the potential speculative building down the road, and something, other than just a blanket request. And I'd be more than willing to sit down and talk, and listen, and work on something like this. Any further? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Have one, one no, two no's?
One no.
One no.
Just one. I'm all by myself.
Motion carries. Motion carries six to one. Beach Access Number Four, Number B. Can you move on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm going to take the next item on behalf of Ben. Beach Access Number Four, Dune Restoration. During Hurricane Florence, as all of us know, Beach Access Four had quite the sucker punch and suffered extensive damage. The Beach Access area, after much work with FEMA and trying to get the proper permitting and approvals, has now been repaired. Our staff is in the process of closing out the final FEMA inspections and approvals on this project. Hopefully, we'll finally get our last FEMA dollars from Hurricane Florence that happened almost three years ago. When this closeout is complete, based upon our recent joint meeting of this board with our North Topsail Beach Board, staff recommends at this time allocating not more than $178,000 in occupancy tax funds to reimburse a sand dune restoration project and placement of a beach mat for public access going across the newly restored dune at Beach Access Number Four. The restoration would be completed by the contractor that is already working with the town of North Topsail Beach, and will be sent to the county for reimbursement. The dune restoration at Beach Access Four is not eligible for FEMA reimbursement, but it is eligible for occupancy tax funding. What we're talking about here is actually replacing the dune. That was the only piece of property that was not included in the original FEMA project, and so we would reimburse that with occupancy tax funds. At this time, I respectfully request that the board consider funding this dune restoration reimbursement on that reimbursement basis at Beach Access Four, and the purchase of a beach mat for access that will go over the dune and will follow with all of our CAMA requirements, with a total cost not to exceed $178,000, and if approved, authorize the county manager or her designee to complete the necessary transaction.
Motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion, dual second, I think. Does this give North Topsail Beach the green light now to go ahead with dune repair, or...
If this passes, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll get a question. I'm kind of confused about this.
Yes, sir.
So, FEMA didn't cover the extensive damage, and now we're looking at $178,000 out of our occupancy tax to fix it?
So... So, back during, in the aftermath of Hurricane Florence, actually, North Topsail Beach put in a project for dune replacement, because a humongous area of dune was damaged all the way across. And they put in only those items, I guess, that were privately owned, had privately-owned land on the other side. We owned Beach Access Four, as we still do. So, they assumed we were going to put that in our, in our request to FEMA, but our request couldn't include that. So, the scope of our project was approved, not including the sand dune. And in the meantime, FEMA has issued an opinion, because we've asked them a million times, "Can we please go ahead and just replace the dune for the safety of everyone and to keep the road from washing out during king tides and everything else?" And FEMA has come back and given us an advisory that they are never going to pay for this again, because it has been breached too many times by hurricanes. It's been, sand's been replaced there too many times, and there are no humans living, of course, at Beach Access Four. We have a pavilion there and a nice parking lot that we keep trying to rebuild, but there aren't any people living there. So, there's no potential loss of human life from it. So FEMA has made the statement to Amy Davis, who handles our FEMA, claims that they're not going to reimburse it at any time in the future. So, our only option is to replace this with occupancy tax funds. And the board, when they met with North Topsail Beach, reached somewhat of a consensus that it would be appropriate if it'd be less expensive for us to go ahead and have them do it with the current contractor that's doing it all the way across the dune, and then we'll reimburse them for our part.
Sharon.
Yes, sir.
Another issue that was, that we found out, too, Robin, was that the dune line is actually where the building's at.
That's correct.
So, if we get damaged again, we'll have to take it down, if I believe that's correct. I see you shaking your head out there. So, we had talked about that in the meeting that we had, and that's another issue, too, Robin. If it hits another hurricane, we will not be able... The dune line is, actually goes right through the middle of the building.
I understand all that. I guess what I'm trying to grasp is the fact that we're paying $178,000 to repair something where there's no inhabitable people there, if that's the right, proper use of the phrase. And it's probably all likely we're going to get damaged again in another hurricane, God forbid, if it comes through here.
Right.
So, to me, when I'm listening to this, my common sense is telling me, are we wasting $178,000? Because it's sand.
Possibly. Well, and they do replace the, when they replace the dune sand, they also plant on top of it to try to help it retain its structure. Obviously, Commissioner Knapp, if a large hurricane hits us, it's probably going to take it out. It can provide some protection for high tide and king tides, and I think that, and I'm sure the other board members can weigh in here, but I think what the thought process was, is the county has put so much work into resurfacing that parking lot and into trying to get the pavilion back open and having to replace the electrical on the pump, that if we can at least delay that and allow our public to appreciate that area of the beach for a while, it's money well spent with occupancy tax funds, which is an important distinction here. This isn't coming out of our operating budget. This is coming out of funds that have been collected for the sole purpose and can only be used for those things which encourage tourism.
Will the height of the dune be the same as connecting dune line there? Will it mesh together, or will it be lower, since it's going underneath the building, right? Is that what you said?
My understanding from the diagram is it would, it would look very similar to the rest of the dune line. It is going to have to go underneath the building, but the building is on pilings. So, it will be, the building will actually be on either side of the dune. But it should be roughly the same size.
I think a lot of this come out of discussion with North Topsail and Alderman Myers here. And I think North Topsail is very appreciative of this, of the working together to do this, because it doesn't only become a barrier to protect our assets, but it also is protecting North Topsail Beach assets as well. They're parked across the street. And I think it, coming out of that joint meeting with them, there was a lot of positive, positive feelings of Onslow County working with North Topsail, North Topsail working with Onslow County. And this is the first step in that joint meeting of things we can do to support North Topsail Beach. I realize it's our property, but it is acting twofold for North Topsail as well as Onslow County. And from that, I think all the representatives from North Topsail were very appreciative of this opportunity to protect the assets we have. Will there be another hurricane? Yes, there will be. Will it slow some of that down? Absolutely. And at the same time, it could protect, I think it's New River Drive. That gets hit all the time, so anything we can do to lessen that down the road, and the opportunity to work with the Beach Town of North Topsail is a good move on our part to do as much as we can to last as long as it can. Because at the end of the day, a functioning beach at North Topsail Beach is going to bring in a lot of occupancy tax that's going to continue to support Onslow as well as North Topsail Beach.
You know, again, I'm not, I'm not being argumentative, I'm just asking questions.
No, no, not, that wasn't for you.
Absolutely. I'm just making sure. But, and I understand, I was at that meeting, too, and we had a very good meeting, and, you know, Tom Leonard and all you guys were great, and I understand that. And I'm trying to visualize this in my head from a simplistic standpoint. I know it provides some type of protection. It provides a barrier, right? I guess I just can't grasp the concept that we're spending $178,000 to restore this dune, and the next tropical storm or hurricane is going to come by and take that away again, and then we have to dip back into the occupancy tax to repair. It's like a merry-go-round kind of, so, you know what I'm saying? That's, maybe that's the problem that I'm having with grasping this, because it's sand, and it's going to blow, it's going to move, it's going to spread. And I, maybe, I don't know, I just, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
I understand what you're saying, I understand the meeting that we talked about, and, you know, we have to do our part, because our beaches are our most natural resources, obviously, and it'll generate a lot more occupancy tax. You know, but like, you know, like the comedian Sam Kinison once said, you know, "What's this going to be 100 years from now? Sand."
That's right.
I think it's going to be ocean.
It might be.
Could be ocean.
But you're right, I agree with you. It's hard to wrap your head around something that's going to be gone maybe in the next year, next five years.
Could be gone in the next two months.
Yeah, it could just...
The Northeastern could take it out.
Told you not to talk like that. We're not going to have any hurricanes this year. That's the only, that's the only, again, the cooperative effort is great with North Topsail Beach, and I appreciate that, I can't reemphasize that enough. But, all right, it's just, to me, it's just common sense, you know? We're spending $178,000 of our money, even though it's occupancy tax, on sand. But that, that's just the way my head wraps around this thing. So, I mean, again, I'm just throwing my opinion and my viewpoint on this.
That's kind of where I was not arguing with you, but that's how I wrapped my, my mind around why we were doing it, was it's kind of a short-term insurance policy to protect the assets for as long as we can. But, yeah, when you drive North Topsail Beach, it's much smaller in 2021 than it was when I was frequenting North Topsail in the 1980s. So, it's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough sale, but we'll see where the need is to continue to protect the asset for as long as we can.
It's a shame DOT won't help, since we're going to protect their road.
Yeah, DOT. Any further?
Ain't going to help.
We have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, Mr. Peggy Garner.
City Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I come to you tonight asking you to allow Cooper Extension to accept a check for a grant that I wrote, so that we can receive a blender bike. Blender bike, for some of you that were at your association meeting last week, may have seen it out with the exhibits. It's only one wheel. I was asked if I was going to ride it tonight. I could not, it only has one wheel. But it has an apparatus in the front, so that as a, an adult or a youth rides that bike, we can put an apparatus on the front, and they can make smoothies with it, or whatever that we would want to put in the blender part, or we can put an apparatus on the front of it, so they can actually do artwork with it. We have one in the district that we've been able to borrow in the past, but we felt that there were so many times that the library had asked us to come and do presentations for them, or we were going to do it for Ag Day for our second graders here in the county, or some of the other times that we were going to use it, we were not able to get it. So, we had a very quick window that I could put this grant together. Usually, the grants, they were only allowing $1,000 request, but because we could not request last year due to the COVID startup, they allowed us to do more, and they gave us even more money this year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here are none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Garner.
Thank you. When we get it, we'll let you all know and bring it to a meeting, so you all can try it out.
Thank you. Section D, I think Mr. Chris White's going to present that one for us.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to talk about snow again. This project will, this project will design and construct a maintenance storage facility that will house snow removal and related maintenance equipment. This will replace and consolidate space that was eliminated during the recent terminal area redevelopment program. Currently, this heavy equipment is stored outdoors, reducing its useful life and availability during adverse weather. This project is intended to provide space for the storage and basic maintenance of this heavy equipment, storage of chemicals, parts, and to house staff during events. FAA grant assurances also require that this equipment be properly stored and maintained. This project is unique. It will be delivered through the design-build method as recommended by the state. The total preliminary cost estimate for the project is 1.375 million. However, due to the significant fluctuations in construction-related costs and commodities, $2 million in state funds have been allocated for this project if needed. Any remaining funds will be allocated to another project at the airport. This building is expected to have a life well beyond 30 years. Therefore, will be built with longevity and utility as its top priorities. These funds have been received by the county and will cover 100% of the project costs due to the state's obligation requirements for the project ordinance, includes construction funds, excuse me, due to the state's obligation requirement of the project ordinance. It includes construction funds before bidding and will be amended once bid. The funds in this ordinance must be obligated by ordinance or returned to the state. Staff respectfully requests that the Board of Commissioners approve this project ordinance and authorize the chairman to sign any documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I'll be looking forward to that snow out there. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
North Carolina Community Foundation, Dallas Fred Allen Endowment. I think Mr. Hargit will be presenting that item.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Have the pleasure this evening to talk to you about the grant that has been won by Animal Services principally during the work of Dr. Patricia Deneen and veterinary technician Brittany O'Neal. The North Carolina Community Foundation, which the affiliate here is the Caring Communities Foundation, has awarded $6,600 from the Dallas Fred Allen Endowment. The grant will purchase equipment for Animal Services Veterinary Suite when they move into that new area, and the funds will be used to purchase some specific equipment, such as a fluid warmer, centrifuge, infusion pump, ultrasonic cleaner, and spay neuter instrument packs. They'll be used to enhance animal care, diagnostics, increase productivity, and quality care at Animal Services Veterinary Clinic. Respectfully, we are asking that the Board of Commissioners accept this grant in the amount of $6,600 and authorize the staff to proceed with the purchase of the equipment that we have mentioned.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Here are none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
2021 Burn Justice Assistant Grant, JAG memorandum, that'll be Sheriff Miller. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff. This is a joint project between the City of Jacksonville and Jacksonville Police Department and the Onslow County Sheriff's Office, because our philosophy is de-escalation and lessing the use of force. So, because there is money involved, it has to be brought to the board and has to be approved by the board. Onslow County Sheriff's Office, along with the City of Jacksonville Police Department, would like to enter into a inter-local agreement in reference to the 2021 Burn Justice Assistance Grant and JAG Grant being sought by the county and the city. And I have a copy of that inter-local agreement here, which was, had brought before the county attorney and also the city of attorney and approved. The inter-local agreement memorandum of understanding states that Onslow County agrees to pay the City of Jacksonville a total of $13,054 of JAG funds for a de-escalation program, provided that the county actually receives that money from the JAG award. So, the City of Jacksonville agrees to pay $36,072 for a de-escalation training program, a training simulator and associated training to be used by both departments and my office. There is no cost to the government of Onslow County unless we get through grant. It means 100% of the grant will be rolled over and given to the Jacksonville Police Department and let them run with it. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Chairman. Sheriff, you and I have done a lot of the simulated stuff before, and one of the key things, the prism that Jacksonville was using, I think it's kind of outdated itself or something, there's something wrong with the equipment. These simulators are amazing, because I have to qualify every year with the simulator until it broke down here about a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago. But it's amazing to be able to do something without having to fire live-fire ammunition, because it's actually, a gun, it's actually the gun you carry, but it has air in it, and what it does is it actually is a laser that lasers on the screen, and you can work with mace, you can work with a gun, and you can work with actually aspitan, several different weapons to be able to do the de-escalation. It's just amazing what it can do.
Commissioner Buchanan, you're exactly right, but it also sharpens the decision-making process of the officer. We put him through it, and then he gets different scenarios, and he makes hopefully the appropriate choice to de-escalate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further? Here are none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Section G, Jones County DSS Legal Service Contract. Ms. Carrie Sanders, our Social Services Director.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The item you have before you this evening is a request to enter into a contract with Jones County Department of Social Services specifically for child welfare legal services. The reason we, they have requested that we enter into this contract is that they have a one specific child welfare case that represents a conflict for their attorney that represents their agency. We initially entered into, entered into this contract in fiscal year 2021 with Jones County. We did receive a little over $5,000 in revenue from this contract. So, we don't expect this contract this year to exceed $15,000, but it is revenue for the department. So, it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed contract with Jones County Department of Social Services and authorize the chairman, vice chairman, and county manager to sign on behalf of the county and the Onslow County Consolidated Human Services.
Motion? Some move?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here are none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Here none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We are at Item 6, Consent Agenda Items, and there was nothing moved to the Item 6. So we'll move to Ms. Russell's County Manager's comments. Ms. Russell, floor is yours.
Thank you so much Chairman Bright and Commissioners. I do have some updates to provide for you this evening. First of all, I do need to talk about COVID-19 again. Even since earlier today, when I sent the report out, I have received from Chrissy Richmond Hoover another update. Because the total for the whole day that they've processed in the Health Department just for today was 359 new cases. They have left 150 cases to be processed tomorrow because they're about to go home finally for the day. Part of that was already included in the numbers I gave you earlier. Overall, since Thursday, we've had 778 new positive cases diagnosed in Anzal County in our citizens. That leaves us with 21,330 cases for the entire event, and we've cleared 19,586. Anzal County is currently, and it would now be higher, but as of this morning's number, we were at 15.1% positive. The state's at 12.8% positive. As I did share with you earlier, we had two new fatalities over the weekend. One was over 65, one was under 65. No underlying conditions were reported. At this point, 45.9% of our Anzal County citizens have received one dose at least of vaccine. One dose of vaccine is not doing much with the current variants that are out there. And we are getting some breakthrough cases of fully vaccinated people. It still seems to reduce the severity of the illness. I spoke with both Anzal Memorial and Naval Hospital this morning. Naval Hospital only had one ICU or COVID unit bed left and we're going to expand this week. Anzal Memorial had eight people in ICU and 31 total positive COVID-19 patients, and it is stressing their system as well. We have asked Anzal Memorial to join with us and do another update on Facebook Live this week, Thursday, so that we can provide the public with their, their thoughts on what it's doing to our, our medical infrastructure. We do encourage everyone that has not been vaccinated to reconsider that decision. We still have free walk-in vaccination at the Anzal County Health Department on College Street. You can choose which of the three brands you would like to have. In happier news, we did get initial census results back, and I've sent a report for you to review with more details on that that was prepared by Assistant County Manager Glenn Hargit. Overall, just some highlights, Anzal County's population has grown 15.1% since the last census, and that is a huge growth. And we're proud that everybody wants to come live here because we love it too. It does, of course, stress all the services we provide, but we're happy to continue to try to meet that challenge. Finally, on a very happy note, and I think that the control room has a picture for me, those of you that were able to attend our Association of County Commissioners Conference, we did receive the local government commission, excuse me, Local Government Federal Credit Union Excellence in Innovation Award across the state for our Health IM program. This is a revolutionary, innovative program that was brought in by the work of a team that was led by Sherry Slater, Assistant County Manager, Sheriff Hans Miller, Colonel Thomas, and our IT Director Glenn Hasted. And it puts important mental health and de-escalation information into the hands of law enforcement and first responders. And we are very excited about this program and very proud of our strong staff. That's all I have for this evening unless there are questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. We'll move on now to Commissioner comments. I will start out with Commissioner Price.
Pleased to be able to attend the ribbon cutting at Coastal Elementary, the opening of our new elementary school near Holly Ridge, which will also serve as a shelter during times of hurricane, whenever those winds kick up and threat of flooding occurs. So it's a beautiful facility and enjoyed being there. We recently did attend the NCAA C convention, five of us here as the board, and, and learned a lot. When I used to go to coaching clinics, I used to say if I could, if I could pick up one thing, it was worth it. And I picked up so many more, so much more than just one thing about some ideas about the American Recovery Act and how we can spend some of that money to better Anzal County, how we can use that. And the mapping book, just the mapping book that we get is really awesome. I didn't bring it tonight, but it breaks down so many different issues and where Anzal County fits in relationship to the other counties in the state. So that's really good. Teachers back to school this morning for the workdays begin, and so we appreciate what they're going to do this year is they mold young minds and students go back next week. So looking forward to a successful school year. And of course, with school opening back up, that means our first football game is Friday night, August 20th. So go out and support your, your local high school athletes. And also congratulations to our Anzal County team that was honored by the local government Federal Credit Union for excellence in innovation for implementing the mental health crisis safety. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Scott?
Well, it's kind of hard to follow that one. He about listed everything. Looking forward to getting back on the field on the 20th, Friday night, be at Jones County. Our schools are getting back in session. If you're looking for a job, we need school bus drivers. So please, if you want a part-time job, go ahead and apply at the school. We need your help. I appreciate everything that the county staff is doing. We've got a big task ahead and ahead of us with the COVID. Please, if you hadn't gotten vaccinated, relook at your decision. It, it does matter with the people around you, and I'm asking for your help and consideration on what we've got in Anzal County. We need to protect it at all costs, and it starts at home with you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve. I had a great time at my first convention, reached out to 19 other county commissioners, had several phone calls last, now last night with them. And it's all about the interaction with other counties to find out what we can do better in Anzal County. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would thank Councilman Bob Warden and Matt Ray and Melissa Anderson for your, for your public comments. Also enjoyed the Commissioner Conference that was very informational and Coastal, New Coastal Elementary School that'll be so helpful when the next storm comes along as a, as a shelter. Also got to attend the Jacksonville-Anzal Sports Commission Freedom Fight, and that was, that was interesting, boxing match. So anyway, it's been an interesting and productive couple of weeks, and we appreciate all of you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. Thank everybody for being here. I'm not going to take Naps Thunder, I'm going to let him jump on it because I'm just going to say a few things about it. But you got to be vaccinated. I mean, you know, you heard me say at the last meeting, I'm almost at the point now that we need to make it mandatory. I'll say it again. And I know that it kind of cringes some of the management, but the thing about it is we have some of our deputies and some of our paramedics are in pretty bad shape. I know there's one deputy that I'm praying for, praying very heavily for, and I don't know if we have any update on him, but these people that are getting really sick have no vaccinations. And the people that I know that have gotten COVID have both vaccinations, and it's like having a flu. They're sick for a couple of days and they're back to work and they're all doing all well. But if you don't have the vaccination, and I'll stop right there, Robin, I know he's going to let you handle it, and I know Jack did it last time, and ask your doctor. I mean, Jack said it perfectly. Ask your doctor. If you trust anybody, trust your doctor to tell you to get the vaccine. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Knapp?
I appreciate it Chairman. You know, Commissioner Buchanan said it best. I don't know if you, there are people out there that are not alarmed by the numbers. I am. I'm very concerned about the numbers and the spike and everything else that's going on. I've been vaccinated. I think everybody appears been vaccinated. You know, I'm not pushing for mandated vaccines with people, okay? That's, that's not my bailiwick. I believe that it's a responsibility of each individual to choose what they want to do. But if you are contemplating getting a vaccination, do it now. Do it ASAP, okay? Because this thing is real. People don't understand that this is real. It's killing people. Okay? We've got the Delta variant, we have whatever other variant out there, Lambda, whatever that's coming up from South America. This stuff is real. I've got individuals that I know that barely hung on in the ICU because of COVID. And then you have the problem with long haulers COVID, people that have symptoms nine, 10 months later because of COVID. You know, those people that are saying COVID is nothing more than a flu, I don't know if you've ever been hit with the flu, full-blown flu, it'll knock you on your rear end for a few days. From what I hear from COVID patients, COVID is 10 times worse than that. And there's a lot of speculation out there saying, well, you take the vaccination, you know, you don't know what's in the vaccination, you don't know the side effects of the vaccination. Well, I'll tell you this, I'd rather take my chances with a vaccination than get full-blown COVID. That, that's just the way I feel about it. And you know, I think if you are on that fence as a citizen out there, again, you have the right to choose. It's your personal freedoms, it's your decision. I'm not going to infringe on that. But if you are on the fence, I encourage you to take that vaccination. Can you get COVID after you get your vaccination? Absolutely. It's been proven with people in ICU, or not the ICU, but the hospital or at home. Will you get the full-blown symptoms? I don't know. No one has the questions to that. No one has the answers to that. So when I get people, when I make my posts on the updates asking me questions, I'm not a doctor, I don't know. You know, you've got some doctors saying that this, this is going to happen, some doctors saying, no, this is not going to happen, and we have the herd mentality. We're all over the, the place. All I know is what I report out from Sharon, this thing is real. And I don't even know if the, the Delta variant is going to mutate again into another variant, you know? I, I don't, I don't know. But I'd rather err on the side of caution. So if you're on that fence, please, please, take that shot, take that vaccination. Again, it's your right, but if you want to take it and you're contemplating it, like Paul Buchanan said, and Jack, talk to your medical doctor. Talk to them and ask them if it's feasible for you to take the shot. I know there are people out there that can't take the shot because of autoimmune disorders and other things out there, and I have friends with those disorders as well. But talk to your doctor. I'm not the one to talk to, none of the county officials are. The doctor is the one that can recommend whether you take it or not, and that's what you should seek. The last thing I just want to talk about real quick, and some of you may, may have seen the news, but this bothers me as a vet, Afghanistan. Take a moment to think about what's going on in Afghanistan right now, and think how lucky we are here. But what's really killing me is I have friends in the Marine Corps who died in Afghanistan, and I know their family. And to see us abruptly pull out and to leave those people stranded there, if you watch the latest video of people hanging on to an airplane, trying to get out of the country, it reminds me of the fall of Saigon. Same thing happened on top of the U.S. Embassy Building. Just take a moment, pray for these people in Afghanistan because they're getting ready to be hit with a, I, I just feel for them. The regime that's taken over is brutal, and we need to do everything we can in our prayers and our thoughts. And when you see a vet out there that served in Afghanistan, or, or any vet out there, thank them. Thank them for what they've done because we spent 20 years in Afghanistan, and I feel for the families who lost loved ones and the soldiers and the Marines and the airmen and Navy guys who came back with PTSD, with no limbs and et cetera. I know of two friends that committed suicide because of their actions or their involvement in Afghanistan, two of them, two friends of mine, and that hurts. So just take a moment, you know, all I'm saying is take a moment, pray for these people, think about them, and just pray that the situation gets better over there for these people. Other than that, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. Thank you for all the people that attended from Joe Ed and some of your comments, and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Foster?
Just Commissioner Buchanan, Commissioner Knapp hit it. The vaccine, all of us, I believe, have taken that vaccine up here. I know someone was questioning me a couple of days ago about you're lying to me, so I took a picture and said, here's my card. It's done. And that's a choice that everybody has to make. I'm like Commissioner Knapp, I don't think we should mandate that. I get a little disturbed when I hear some of these states wanting to mandate a, a vaccination card to be able to travel within the United States, which kind of gets a little scary when you look at history and that type of stuff. But at the same time, these numbers are escalating and, and there is a concern because it's, it's real. And if you haven't gotten it, my recommendation was go and get it, but that's, again, that's your choice. Lots of people, several, like Commissioner Knapp said, that, you know, we know that have been suffering. And I don't want anybody else to find themselves in that situation when that vaccine is out there and it can, it can ease the symptoms, I guess, may not be the right term, but it's definitely a lot different than not having the vaccine and getting COVID-19. And even with the, the deal in Afghanistan, our veterans and the time they've put in over there the last 20 years, and, and I think every one of us in this room probably has somebody that served over there at some point over the last 20 years. And to see it fall so quickly as we abruptly pull out, you know, they, they need that help to continue what they're doing because not everybody has the resolve that the people in the United States of America have. Because if you remember, it was only 33% of the population when we fought the American Revolution that were in support of revolution. 33% supported the British, 33% were just waiting to see what happened. Now 100% is reaping the benefits of the 33 of what we have in this nation. So wake up every morning and be thankful of the United States military and what we have here. It's special. Teachers went back to work today, had them in my building, and one of the last things I said to them as we closed out our workdays was this. This year, 21, 22, whether it's your first year teaching, your 10th year teaching, or your 35th year teaching, this quite possibly could be the most important year you step back in that classroom. Because I've looked at my 30-plus year, or 30-year career, and I have not entered a school year after 40 days out because of a hurricane, closing down in the spring of the next year, and not opening until the last six weeks of the last year, and what these students have faced over the last three years. It has been tough on them, and those that are in the profession are walking into it this year and probably, as I said, the most important year of their career, of the impact they will have on our students and the future of not only Anzal County, but this nation. And they're going in there not knowing what's going on with, with the, with COVID. But our first responders are facing going out and seeing what's taking place, and our numbers are in a tough spot there and having to get help to come in and support us. But at the end of the day, I know that we're going to do get through this. And I pray for those that have lost someone, those that have been sick, and there's going to be more of us, and I pray for that as well. But the sun will rise again, and we will be happy and celebrate in the United States that it has risen again. But the resolve of this nation is unmatched, and we will come through this as well. On the other side, be very excited about who we are as a people. Congratulations, Katie. Great job with the book bags, over 600 given out on Saturday in the drive-by book bag back-to-school celebration. We appreciate what you did there. And We appreciate what you did there and take care of yourselves and thank you.
Thank you, sir. We did approve the money for Beach Access Number Four for North Toxell Beach that come to, to be after our workshop and now the reality of the board meeting tonight, we've approved that. So, you can go back and report that to the board and to the mayor. It's just a way that we are saying that we're willing to work together and do what we can to, to, for the cause, but there never is enough money. It's, it's never going to be enough money to do what we need to do or what we want to do. But I want to ask Sherri a question. If a person gets infected with the COVID-19, they can't get the vaccine at that point, can they?
I, I believe that they're not recommending you get vaccinated while you're sick, but they can-
After, I know, but-
Sure. And, and I would have to ask Chrissy exactly what the guidance is currently because it's changed throughout time. I know initially they were making folks wait more than 30 days to get the vaccine, but I'm not sure that there's, I don't believe the wait is that long at this point. We can get some information out for you on that, though.
Well, two things. I've been to several funerals where people have died from, you know, COVID-19 or COVID-19-related illness and sickness. But to this day, I have never been to a funeral and I've been to a lot of people that died from the vaccine. So, I will tell you that. I would encourage people, like Paul said, like Robin said, talk to your doctor. If your doctor tells you to get a shot, take their advice. If you don't like what the doctor says, you can get a second opinion. If you don't like what they say, you can fire both of them, but you need to take advice of your, don't take my advice, I'm not a medical professional, none of us that I'm, that I know of are, but I would, I would take the advice of your doctor. On the idea of the new school that opened, it wasn't ever mentioned, the new school Coastal Elementary, and we're getting ready to open another one in a few months at, out on Eastern Outfitters.
Clear view.
We invested, the county invested or financed around $62, $64 million and we put in 1,600 students in those two schools. It's going to be a little bit more than that, but at least 1,600 additional students will be going in those two schools that now are camping out in trailers and somewhere else and not, maybe not even going to school. But the, the thing about that, Mr. Ray and Economic Development folks, that school put 86 people to work that was not working in Anzal County, there's 86 additional employees that's working in Coastal Elementary. There's going to be another 86 going to be working and putting to work in the other school. So, we've got 172 people that's got job or will have jobs now that didn't have jobs before. Now, we're not in the business of providing jobs, but it's just a residual effect of building the schools and getting our students housed and economic development with getting these jobs. Those are high-paying jobs too. Most of the teachers, I mean, they don't make a ton of money, but they, they get a modest salary in retirement. That's why Tim is so rich. But anyway, I want to congratulate Sherri on the award that you went and received down at the National Association County Commissioners Convention this past week. And we did have a lot of networking down there with other counties. And actually, I learned more from talking with other county and county commissioners and managers than we actually did in some of the presentations. So, networking is a key because we found out that everybody's in the same boat that we are as far as the COVID-19 and all the cases are rising and they continue to rise. I'd like to see some type of tapering off on that, but I think that's wishful thinking right now. We just have to see how it goes. Other than that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.